Welcome, everyone. We call the February council meeting to order. Normally, we have a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance, but we had another meeting that just preceded this one at 6:30 where we did have a moment of silence and a pledge of allegiance, so we're not going to repeat that because it's been our practice to not do that two times in the same evening. So we'll call this meeting to order. Chief Volco, please.
Councilwoman Coby.
Present.
Councilman Verris.
Here.
Councilwoman Demko.
Here.
Councilman Catina.
Here.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
President.
President Delos.
Present.
Mayor Fugus.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. We have two presentations before we start into our business. The first one is for the Rotary Club. I think most everyone here is familiar with the Rotary Club and the many good things they do in our community for more years than any of us know. And so at this time, I invite the mayor to make a presentation to representatives of the Rotary Club who are here this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. We're actually going to make a proclamation today. We're going to designate the month of February Rotary Club Month here in May. I would like to acknowledge some of the individuals over here. First of all, this is the members of the board that I have as president, this Dr. K. Fancy. Would you please stand up? We also have here Mr. Young. I don't know, do you hold a title, Mr. Young, also?
Not yet. Because I've watched the Rotary Club.
Thank you. We have Mrs. Keitz. Would you please stand up? And then, of course, we have the district governor with us today, District Governor Kelly. Thank you.
(applause). That I have a name here. Patricia John. Thank you. Now, I was just going to announce you anyway. I actually could not see you. I'm pretty short. Oh, well, hell, sure, I am.
We also have the secretary, which is Richard Iorio, and he's not with us today. And we have the treasurer, John Mendenhall, Jr., and we want to acknowledge the past president, Dr. Katz, also. And at this time, first of all, we do appreciate everything that you do in our communities. And we know that your reach is much further than just our communities, but these are just some of the activities that you perform within our community. You provide backpacks of food for children to take home over weekends so that their families do not go hungry. You also provide them with school supplies, backpacks, and other supplies so that they have school supplies for when they go to school. You provide children with shoes. You provide dictionaries for the children. You sponsor the Interact Club at the high school. You do the vocational days in which our high school students can learn about all the different vocations during a wonderful luncheon. And what I'd like at this time, there was a story that was given to me by District Governor Kelly at one of the library functions. It actually moved me so much that I would love everyone to hear the same story about this young child. Would you like to come up to the mic and just give us that story, District Governor Kelly?
Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here representing the Rotary and the Rotary District. The story is about a young student. We went to the school and we were giving out dictionaries. And so the young children would raise their hand and they say, "Is this really my book? Do I get to keep this?" And this went through three or four kids, and they would ask in different manners because they wanted to be sure they could take that book home. And finally, one, you know, Dr. Fancy asked me to explain to the children about Rotary and everything. So I was doing that, and one little boy raised his hand, and I said, "What is your question?" And he said, "I need a new pair of shoes." And he associated the Rotary Shoe Program. He didn't care about that dictionary. I mean, he was glad to have it, but he directly asked me for shoes. And it was towards the end of the year, and usually we give them out, you know, at the beginning of the school year, all the kids that need shoes, get a pair of shoes. So I did tell the principal, I said, "He asked me directly, so if you don't have any certificates left, you get in touch with me," because, you know, they, he knew that Rotary meant a pair of new shoes for him. And it was late in the year, you know, he needed those shoes very badly. In my estimation, just to stand up in front of his classmates and ask.
(applause).
Sue, Sue, my dear, I must know, did he get his shoes?
Well, they didn't call me, so I'm assuming they had a few certificates left. They usually keep a few on hand, so.
Right. Thank you.
You know, if they ever, and I will mention also that this year, we did Christmas gifts for the same children that get shoes, and a lot of them asked for a coat. We couldn't understand why they were putting a coat on their list when there's that Project Thunderbolt. Well, we had 43 kids who somehow missed Project Thunderbolt, and they did not have a coat. And the way the school tells that is, you can't go outside at lunchtime unless you have a coat. So I did wear a coat one day, but not the next day because they told terms, and it wasn't their term for the coat. So we had a volunteer donate a gift, and her company matched it, and we were able to raise $1,500. And through the Salvation Army, we bought 43 coats, which we gave to, we took out, we went and bought, and we delivered them to the school the first day after the Christmas break, which, if you recall, was a really cold and snowy day, so they all bought a brand-new coat, too. So, love your clothes.
Thank you.
And now, with the proclamation, the Borough of Carnegie Proclamation 2012-01, to designate the month of February as Rotary Club Month, whereas the Rotary is a volunteer organization of 1.2 million businesses and professional leaders united worldwide to provide humanitarian service and help build goodwill and peace. And whereas Rotary Clubs are non-political and open to every race, culture, creed; and whereas the Rotary was founded in Chicago in 1905 as the world's first volunteer service organization and quickly expanded around the globe; and whereas the Carnegie Call Your Rotary Club was chartered by Rotary International on February 14, 1924; and whereas the Carnegie Call Your Rotary Club meets weekly to plan service projects, discuss community and international issues, and enjoy fellowship; and whereas the Carnegie Call Your Rotary Club continues to be involved in multiple fundraising events and service projects in the Borough of Carnegie and Carlington School District that has benefited our residents and our students immensely. Now, therefore, the mayor and the borough council take great pride in recognizing and honoring the Carnegie Call Your Rotary Club and do hereby proclaim February as Rotary Club Month. Signed this day, February 13, 2012. And by the way, tomorrow is your anniversary, so happy anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
I had a question. On that Salvation Army and all that Rotary Club, they give out the jackets and stuff for people, like they were talking about. Well, Salvation Army sent us all these things to fill out for people in church. They may have gave two jackets out, down the second backers. That's all they asked. Why would they ask, why would they say, "Fill it out, if you fill it out, the kids can fill it out"? The parents, so they can get a jacket, okay? And then, all of a sudden, you don't hear no more about it. There's like a couple of people they called and give a few things. It's like Salvation Army.
I can't get to the Salvation Army, sir, what the Salvation Army's policy is. I don't know. But I don't mind, I'll stop down there, and I'll talk to Mr. Verris more and see what the situation is.
That's all I want to know. And all of a sudden, they send all this paper and all that to fill out and all of that, "Fill it out." And you don't hear no more back from them. What, 60 people, maybe two or three people catch up.
Is there a candid touch base with your wife on this?
Well, you could.
Or should I touch base with you? I'll stop and talk to them, and I'll get back to that.
You could. That's all I want to know. And all of a sudden, you don't hear no more about it.
Valid point. It's been my.
She still cared anymore. Church still cared.
Well, she's a good lady.
I know she is.
Yes, she is.
She still cared.
We have one other thing before we get into regular business. It's a special, kind of unanticipated honor that we have for the chief this evening. I got in about a half hour before we started. We have a member of our community here in Carnegie who happens to think the chief is just the greatest thing since sliced bread. And, of course, most of us think exactly the same way. But she went out of her way and purchased this incredible monument, I was saying, miniature, regarding what the chief has done for our community. It's a picture, a statue here of Atlas holding up the globe, and she included a card that says, "Carnegie Police Chief Jeff Harbin. Those who bring sunshine to the lives of others can't keep it from themselves. Thanks for everything. You watch over us Carnegie citizens and thus bring peace, comfort, and tranquility to us. You are our sunshine. Thank you. We appreciate you, honor you, and love you." And she wishes we made anonymous. So this is a gift to the chief from one of our citizens on behalf of everything he has done for our community.[728.12][728.12](applause).
Totally unexpected.
I'll find the glaze and get that out of my office.
Hi, you have copies of the agenda. If anyone has comments, any public comments regarding motions that are listed on the agenda, and this is your opportunity to come up and speak about them. Please state your names, where you live, and then, go ahead.
Living in Typerius, located in Regal, New York. You have on the logbook, motion for the 2012 pavement maintenance program to Shields Asphalt. Is that the road that we have to be paving?
That will be all the roads that are left to be paved? No, this is just a paving program for this year. It does not pave every remaining street in Carnegie.
This year, the four staff members, it is one of the, it's all one of them.
Any other public comments regarding motions? There being none, we'll start with the motions under administration, finance, Councilman Catina.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on January 3 and January 9, 2012.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries.
Motion to approve the February bill list and the debt.
Seconded. Motion's been made and seconded, comments? Roll call vote, please, chief.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to approve the purchase of a 2013 Ford Utility Police Interceptor through the Shaycock Purchasing Alliance, its price not to exceed $25,158.
Seconded. Comment, please?
This vehicle will be an SUV vehicle, four-wheel drive. For some time, we've felt that it's pretty pertinent to have such a vehicle. We never like bad winters, but sometimes, whenever you get a bad winter and if you have a rear wheel, even just front-wheel drive police vehicles, sometimes you can't get to where you need to be, you know, if there's domestic some of his life. So we felt that it was very important to at least have one four-wheel drive vehicle among our police vehicles.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Motion's been made and seconded, and roll call, chief.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer a conditional offer of employment, I'm sorry, motion to approve a life insurance death benefit paid in the amount of $5,000 to designate a beneficiary, a retired sergeant, Alfred Dinesi.
Seconded. Comments?
This is, it's just, I'm sorry, this is a one-time death benefit that's in the contracts for employees of the borough. It's Sergeant Dinesi, he was a dear friend of mine. He was a great all-around person, and, but this is a one-time, like I said, death benefit, death benefit, or death benefit that's paid at their time of death.
I'd like to, first of all, thank Sergeant Dinesi for his service, 25 years of service. But I just want to say, this is a contractual obligation, and it's in, among mistaken in both contracts, Public Works and the police contract. And right now, it's an unfunded mandate, and so it's something that comes from the borough's general fund amongst, or am I correct?
Oh, and we put that on the anticipated.
Okay, then it comes out of an unanticipated expenditure fund. But either way, the borough is obligated to pay this because it is contractual.
Any other comments? Roll call, chief. Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to offer a conditional offer of employment to Timothy Clark for the position of police officer. This conditional offer of employment is contingent on the applicant passing a physical and psychological examination, and meaning the minimum employment standards is set forth by a physical police officer's education and training.
Seconded. Comment?
For some time since I've been on council, I'm now in my fifth year, right prior to getting on council is when council had chosen not to replace the 13th officer when he went to Northern Region. But I always assured residents that, you know, if there was money in the budget and we didn't need to increase taxes to carry this out, that I was in support of it. When Mr. Catina, going on council, he's, you ask anybody on this council, he's a numbers guy. Never seen a guy crunch numbers the way this guy does. And he looked at the budget, looked at the budget, and we were able to do it. I think it's going to be very beneficial, that, you know, it'll provide support to whenever investigations are ongoing and foot patrol moves, and it will definitely enhance that one officer will make a huge impact on our community. Thank you, Mr. President.
Other comments? Chief Volco, please. Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I'm sorry, I'm just very happy about this because I think it's been a long time coming, so I'd just like to thank the council for making this happen. Motion to enter into an agreement with Pennsylvania American Water Company to supply the borough with information necessary for the divestiture process for managed contract sewer billings.
Comments?
Pennsylvania American Water currently does our billing for delinquent sewage, and as of October, they are getting out of business, they will no longer be doing our billing for delinquent sewage. So we are going to basically, like I said, entering an agreement with Pennsylvania American Water to basically get out of the arrangements, since they're not going to be doing it anymore in October anyway. It's just, it's a process of the divestiture.
And you should be aware that that means you're going to get two different bills, where you now get one. You get a water bill, which also has your sewage bill on it, and you will be getting two different bills, one for your water bill, and then a separate bill for your sewage bill. And that is a result of the water company no longer collecting that sewage.
I'm just asking about the people who came on my road, because they kept their water in the wrong.
Yes, this is affecting everybody. It's not just Carnegie. The water company is not going to be collecting sewage money anymore.
Are they still going to be putting a landlord program in place that, is that still going to be the location that sewage bills aren't being paid as part of the $40 registration?
Yeah, we're working that out with Jordan. That's the anticipation that it will be. If there's no further comments, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries.
Motion to exonerate the Borough of Carnegie for borough taxes due on property owned by the Borough of Carnegie located in block and lot 103C, 290, 1993 through 1998, 104P, 92, 1994, 102F, 74, years 2009 through 2010, 102B, 287, years 2006, 2007, 2009 through 2010, and 65B, 62, year 2003.
Seconded.
Comments? Being none, roll call, the vote, chief. Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to appoint Carl McDougall to the Civil Service Commission with a term expiring on December 31, 2013.
Seconded. Any comment?
Yes, Carl, his approach to boroughs several times as far as taking a more active role, Brandon Ute Dunn, Carl, Carl served in the United States Army during Vietnam, and he's proud of his service in the Army. He's always helped out with Memorial Day Parade, and he has a lot of passion for his time, and he's always been looking to, you know, take one more step in helping us. So I'm very happy that we've pointed him to the Civil Service Commission. I'm sure he'll do a fine job for us. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? All in favor. Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
President Delos, I need to make an amendment to this motion. It should read, "Motion to appoint John Duran to the Vacancy Board expiring on December 31, 2013."
Is there a second to that amendment?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the amendment, just the amendment, not on the motion? Add the dates and the names. Say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. All right, the motion has been amended as Councilman Catina suggested adding the name John Duran, and the expiration date was what?
December 31, 2013.
Comments?
Jordan served in this capacity for us before. This vacancy board is only utilized whenever council is, if there's a vacancy that occurs, such as the mayor's seat, and council is in a tie vote and can't make a compromise, can't break that vote, we then go to the vacancy board, and he's, he becomes the official tiebreaker. And as I said, John served in that capacity before, so he has experience, and I'm sure he'll do a fine job.
Other comments? Roll call, please, chief. Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes. We have no motions under code enforcement this evening, so we'll continue with Public Works motion. Councilman Demko, please.
Motion to permit the J.G. Drywall Company to utilize Seven Cabin Field on Friday evenings from April 1, 2012, for August 31, 2012, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. for their men's softball games.
Motion's been made and seconded. Comments? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries.
Motion to award the bid for the 2012 pavement maintenance program to Shields Asphalt Paying at a cost of $481,961.50.
Comments? I have a copy of the list. This is the amount of money that we need to set aside for the road program this year. The list of the streets, these would be streets that we're going to contract out there repair, not the ones that we would do ourselves, that is, our Public Works Department would do. So this is the money for the outsourced roads that we hire contractors to do. That would include the Parkway ramp at Bell Avenue, Broadway between Mansfield and School Street, Franklin Avenue, the upper part of Franklin Avenue, not the lower part where the school is, Roberta between Remer and Huron, Home Street between Beechwood and Library, that's the alley that runs between Beechwood. Now, Home Street is the street that's down by the library that connects Beechwood to Library Avenue. Elizabeth, which is between, from Boden to Osage, and Station Street from Lincoln to Wabash. Other comments?
Mr. President, the only thing I would like to point out that we're doing all of these roads this year due to the bond refinancing, the bond refinancing that we put out the bid last year. So that's the only way that we were able to do this many roads.
Yes, people should be aware that this amount of money, $481,000, is far in excess of what we would normally spend in a year for road paving. So, but this was made possible by the fact that we took out an extra bond issued last year to do some major infrastructure work this year.
And typically, just so the audience understands, what we get from the state for road improvement programs typically runs between $100, $120,000 to $150,000 per se, per year, and we're doing $481,000 this year with the bond that we put out last year.
If there's no further comments, then roll call vote, please, chief. We have a second on the motion.
Seconded.
Councilman Verris.
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko.
Yes.
Councilman Catina.
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfeld.
Yes.
Councilwoman Coby.
Yes.
President Delos.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to authorize the emergency repair of a 40-inch-long section of 36 feet diameter for a sewer pipe beneath Chestnut Street between East Main Street and Hensville Boulevard by National Gunweight at an estimated cost of $38,400.
Seconded. Comments?
If I may chime in here, we were notified at the beginning of January, or the chief was, by Borough Engineer, that Chestnut Street, that a entity, National Gunweight, was sent in to survey the sewer pipe that went over Chestnut Street. in to survey the sewer pipe that went over Chestnut Street and they reported back that the pipe and Chestnut Street were in imminent danger of collapse. What was done was council convened through email and authorized the engineer, the engineer confirmed that this was in fact the case. Council convened and authorized the engineer to enter into a contract to go in there and essentially, what they did was they wanted to spray concrete on mesh inside the pipe to shore up the pipe and make a permanent replacement to the pipe. What this is, is ratifying that contract because it was done rather hastily so that people would know what was done.
Thank you, Mr. Solicitor. Other comments regarding this repair? This is underneath of Chestnut Street in the area around the old North Star Chevrolet Service Garage, right underneath the street is where this pipe is referred to. And if you don't know, a lot of our sewers in this town are very, very old. I mean, literally, they're sewers that are made out of bricks. They look like a brick oven. They're flat on the sides, they have a dome top. And in this case, that dome top had collapsed and the road above it was getting ready to collapse as well. If there's no other further comments, a roll call vote, please, Chief. Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Catina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President Delosse?
Yes.
Motion passes. Public Safety, uh, motions, Councilman Sarsfield, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion A under Public Safety is a motion to adopt Borough Ordinance Number 2371, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie creating a two-hour parking limit Monday through Friday between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. Residents are exempt on Sixth Avenue, both sides between Steam Street and the dead end of Sixth Avenue.
Second. Comments?
Um, we are doing this, again, it is, the bus would make people, it travel our time. I mean, you know, we put out no parking here, no parking there, and they seem to find their way. So again, this is, you know, people come home from work, people come home from grocery shopping, et cetera, and, you know, there's cars from West Virginia, Ohio, I mean, just all over the place, they're utilizing the bus and taking up residents' parking and I was in that necessity of passing this.
Mr. President, the only thing I would like to add is unfortunately, I believe this problem's going to get a little worse before it gets better because the Port Authorities announced that they're closing a number of parking lot lots. One of them being, one of them at closest proximity to us is the lot across from St. Simon and Jew and the other lot in north of Veyad, so I have no doubt that these people obviously will make their way to Carnegie since this is one of the next available closest lots for them. So bear with us because we are working on a, the chief is working on an overall parking ordinance for the entire borough, which hopefully shouldn't be that much longer.
Additionally, they're talking about closing the parking lot in Moon Township, which has 600 parking spaces in it, which means all of those folks are going to come to Parkway right down until the traffic stops on the Parkway, they're going to get off at Carnegie and go for a place to park. So...
And they're also...
And they're also eliminating the G3, which is the moon flyer. So the people will be coming.
They will be driving here. If there's no further comments, uh, this is just a yea and nay vote. Could I have, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries.
Motion B is a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2012, Dash 03, Resolution of the Borough of Carnegie, adopting the Allegheny County 2011 Hazardous Mitigation Plan.
Second. Comments?
Yes, every so often, Allegheny County requires every municipality within Allegheny County to update or bring it to current their hazardous mitigation plan. So this is just more of a bookkeeping type item, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion carries.
Okay, motion C is a motion to adopt Resolution 2012-Dash-4, a concurrent resolution of the Borough of Carnegie confirming that the Borough of Carnegie has designated personnel to apply for the redevelopment authority, Allegheny County, for a grant by the Camels Run Road Watership.
Second. Comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. This is, what they're trying to do is, the Army Corps of Engineers has the creek all the way up to Tomorrow Avenue Bridge, beyond that, all the way up to Robinson Township, that's all owned by the individual, I guess municipalities, or actually by, the creek's actually owned by the state, but it's under the municipalities' property. So they're trying to expand the scope of the Army Corps of Engineers all the way up through Robinson. As you know, we had the flooding in Lexington Court, which was almost, now almost two years ago now, I've heard about a year and a half, and it's taking forever to get these, this issue settled. The thing about this, the study has to be done and then that has to be presented to Congress, then Congress has to appropriate money for, then Congress actually had, well, has to include it into a bill, and then after that, they actually have to appropriate money for it. So it's a long, arduous process and it seems like the small person always gets lost in. But this is the first step and a lot of times, the federal government will fund these studies, but they just don't have the money to do it. So this committee is reaching out to get some of the infrastructure tourism money to fund the study. It's about $250,000, just the study cost. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Other comments?
Yeah, for time completion, Dale, you're talking about for the study?
The study could be anywhere, it could be anywhere from eight to 13 months, but we have to get the money first, so we wouldn't even know that for a while. So it, I won't expect anything in any immediacy right now. The only thing immediate for Lexington Court area would be work below the bridge, which should be starting, which is already underway, but I don't know if they were in the creek yet, but all the plans are made.
Motion's been...
Is it true that upstream of the Mariner Line, the bridge is under the Robinson Sewer Board?
I don't know the answer to that. If the park is in Carnegie, I don't know.
That's where I've heard.
Motion to debate and second it, roll call vote, please, Chief. Councilwoman Coby?
Yes.
Councilman Verris?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilman Catina?
Yes.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Yes.
President Delosse?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mr. President, if I may, I would like to entertain an additional motion and just to explain to the residents, after I read the motion, if anyone does have questions on that motion, because it was not listed, they have a right to come up and question that motion. It'll be motion D, and it's a motion of Carnegie Borough Council to authorize Chief of Police, Chief of Police Jeffrey Harden to prepare police schedules and whatever else necessary to prepare for Camp Cadet. Can't you check, can't you that?
Second. Motion is second.
Mr. President?
Disagreement, yes.
I just want to say that that motion actually isn't a, under the Borough Code cannot be made. It's because the daily activities do fall directly under the Mayor, under the Borough Code, and our solicitor would be able to tell you that. But if they wanted a motion to fund or something, then I'd make sure they could do that. But to direct the daily activities of the Chief of Police falls directly underneath the Mayor, under the Borough Code. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Solicitor, comment, is this motion illegal?
No, I believe the motion is acceptable in the form it is. It's not, it's just directing them, giving the general authority to make preparations, make applications and prepare, make the general preparations for Camp Cadet. It's not directing anything, it's not authorizing funding, it's not directing any specific dates to these schedules or anything like that. It's just a general, a general motion to give the authority to proceed with preparing.
Councilman, could you read that again? There was something in the scheduling and I just want to make sure I'm just clear.
A motion of Carnegie Borough Council to authorize Chief of Police, Jeffrey Harden, to prepare police schedules and whatever else necessary to prepare for the Camp Cadet.
Do we need to put the dates in there?
I think that's a little bit gray in that area there.
All right, I'll take back that motion, Mr. President.
No, we have, we have...
Well, we could table, I'll make a motion to table that.
All right.
I'll make a motion to withdraw that.
Second. There's a motion to withdraw. Let's have a vote, please. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Motion is withdrawn.
All right. I have a motion of Carnegie Borough Council to authorize Chief of Police Jeffrey Harden to prepare applications and anything else necessary to Camp Cadet.
Second. Disagreement?
Once again, it sounds like they're authorizing his daily activities, they're authorizing him to prepare something. That's just a perfect thing. But I will say this on the Camp Cadet, so we don't make this long and drawn out, I do appreciate council's, council wants to have Camp Cadet this year. It was originally discontinued because the, we didn't have a 13th officer. Technically, we have hired a 13th officer at this time. However, that officer hasn't even been, we did it probably 15 minutes ago. That officer hasn't been trained or isn't even up to speed yet. We have an individual who is, has to go through psychological testing, physical testing, pass all that, then has to get on duty and undergo training. We have, he's a, he's a young man, I'm very confident that he'll be a great officer. He's never been a police officer before and he's never been in Carnegie before, so there's a lot to learn. And what we had talked about before is that, well, I firmly think Camp Cadet's a good program. I want to make sure that our officer is up and running before we make any, you know, before we do anything about Camp Cadet. The thing I will say is that our department is definitely in transition to, even though we have hired an additional officer, we are still running way, budget-wise, way over when it comes to overtime. Even last year, we were way over budget with overtime and Mr. Catina will explain that when he goes over this report later on. The concern I have is that, you know, we're bringing an officer on to alleviate the scheduling, to reduce some of the overtime. So at this time, during this year, I would prefer to do a needs assessment, see where we're at, get everybody established before we decide to start up Camp Cadet. My firm belief is that the reason for the 13th officer is not just to have Camp Cadet, it's to, and I will go over my report, the things that us and the sergeants and the chief discussed in the Army. It's to increase the patrols out there, increase the bike patrols, try to handle some of the truck issues in this community, increase foot patrols in some of the areas that are problematic. I also have a list of all the things that we do for children and that list is absolutely tremendous. One area that we do absolutely nothing for is senior citizens and other, in fact, other citizens also. We have no program to establish for those. At this time, I would like to try to get some programs for the senior citizens of our community, programs such as fraud prevention, crime prevention, cyber safety. I think those would be very beneficial to our senior citizens. They experience difficulties all the time. In fact, in my dealings with the public, I've had a large request for those type of programs. And I have two kids in the school, one of my kids would qualify for Camp Cadet, but I haven't had a large request from people with Camp Cadet. And I think that's because our police, while that's a great program, they do so much within our schools that it's a tremendous amount. We do DARE, we do Adopt a School, we do cyber safety presentations to both the elementary school students and to the parents. We do drug trend lectures to both elementary school and to the parents. We do search and seizure class with the dog and you'll see, you've seen that in our publication that was just recently out in Montor. So we do, we run the Public Safety Day. There's also numerous other things that we do with the schools. So at this time, I don't want to overextend the department to the point that we can't implement other programs and that we don't use this 13th officer to the best of our ability for this year. And I also, being someone who has a large background in training and a graduate degree in instructional leadership with an emphasis on training, know that programs, you need to verify a program by doing a complete needs assessment. And you also want to be able to sustain a program. You don't want to be able to start a program and drop it. So those are things I think we should undertake this year at this time. So those are my feelings on it. The last thing I will say is as far as the 13th officer, we are definitely a department in flux. You know, we have a Chief of Police who does a great job and he's also a Borough Manager and spends quite a bit of time as a Borough Manager. We have a sergeant now who works daylight, handles a lot of the chief's duties. So this officer, in reality, only brings us up to 12 full officers, in my opinion. It's just my opinion, I'm sure there'll be some disagreement, but we need to make sure that the safety of this community and the financial health of this community are met and then also that we address all the needs of all the individuals of this community, not just the children, including seniors and other residents. So that's where I stand on this. If there's any other motion, that's where I stand. And I appreciate council for their, for their warning this program and I'm a lot against it, I just don't think that we're ready for it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Other comments, please, Councilman?
Well, I guess, Mr. President, I guess I'm a little bit taken back because we can't do something for the children of our community for a one-week time period we're talking about COVID this summer. It's not an ongoing program like DARE, it's not an ongoing program like some of our other programs. It's a one-week program for the children of our community. Being a father of a six-year-old, I guess my view is a little jaded. And unfortunately, I am a firm supporter of Camp Cadet. It was built to capacity when we had this program, when we had the 13th officer, I believe the chief came close to turning the kids away. This is truly a benefit for the kids of the community and any, and I've said to this council before, I, Councilwoman Coby knows what it feels like to put a smile on a kid's face. And that's what this program does. It's a good thing for the community, it's a feel-good program, and if we can't make this happen, shame on us.
And I just want to comment, good comments, Mr. Vice President, but, you know, I have article upon article of how this has affected young men's lives, how that one week has inspired some to go on to become police officers, become better people. And if we change one life, we've changed the world. I mean, it's one life at a time and this is about our young people, that's, they're at a vulnerable age. I mean, that's one week that they're in here with our police and they're seeing our police in a different light. They're building bonds there, they're building a trust there. It's just, I could go on and on, the things that this program does to benefit our community.
Mr. President...
There's really no cost to this either, is there?
There is a cost.
There is?
Yes, there's a, there's the cost of the officer working and there's the overtime cost to cover the officer's shift. So, you know, a sergeant working the whole week off-duty is probably about $1,300 in the overtime. You're probably talking about $2,000. The cost is minimal. But here's what I would say as far as the cost goes. We have community organizations that do great jobs with helping kids. If you took that $2,000 and you broke that down, you could give 80 children scholarships to the Boys and Girls Club for a full year, a full year of after-school programming. If you took that $2,000 and you broke that down, you could give 80 children scholarships to the Boys and Girls Club for a full year, a full year of after-school programming. And let me tell you something, our boys and girls clubs do tremendous things. And if you want to hear story after story about lives ever changed, even our chief's life was changed at the Boys and Girls Club. So we could give 80 students and we are one of the only communities, just so you know, in the whole Boys and Girls Club network in Allegheny County that provides no funding at all to our Boys and Girls Club. So there's a perfect, a perfect place for us to start with that type of funding. 80 children scholarships.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Other comments?
Perhaps we could change the wording on that because it still says whatever else is necessary, which could lead to scheduling. Could we not just word that, you had said something about take applications, see how many children we get an interest, and then, you know, go on to expound that or, you know, go on and put more in that as far as, you know, scheduling later. But perhaps right now, we could just reword to say we're going to like do a little investigation as far as applications, et cetera.
Well, it doesn't say, the second motion I read doesn't say anything about scheduling.
No, but it says whatever else is necessary, doesn't it?
Yes.
Well, that could be construed as scheduling is necessary.
But aren't we confident in our chief of police? If he knows what to do with his competency.
I'm just saying, you know, if it is indeed an illegal thing to put in there, then why would we even open ourselves up to something that could be misconstrued? Why wouldn't we just put, you know, that we're going to take applications and, I mean, break it down, put it, you know, in, just keep adding to it. I mean, you know, don't put anything that says and whatever else necessary. That could be, you know, if you go and spend $10,000 on something, like whatever else necessary.
We would have to give them authorization for that.
Well, prepare, prepare all documentation for like the Camp Cadet.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying. Couldn't you just say that?
Are you offering a amendment?
I am offering amendment.
That would say, could you give me specific language for us to solicit to write that down?
Why doesn't it just make it that it's, we're, you know, authorizing Jeffrey C. Harbin, Chief of Police of Carnegie Borough to take applications, help me that and?
Accept applications.
Accept applications.
So the chief's album called Camp Cadet.
I mean, you know, the children are getting older. I mean, I agree with Pat, my nephew went to it and he's 15 years old, he still talks about it. And there are a lot of good things, stranger danger, gun safety, drug programs. But, you know, what if we put all this time effort into it and we get five kids a job or something? I'm not saying it's going to happen, but, you know, it could. Because we don't, it bothers us if I'm putting dates in. We don't even have dates. People want vacations, people do things, people arrange for their children if both parents work to have after, well, it'd be summertime, you know, babysitting or whatever, or children care. I mean, there might not be children out there that can come. Why don't we just explore it?
Is there a second to Councilwoman's motion to amend?
Second.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Then just voting on the motion to amend the motion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. The motion is amended as was previously read by Councilwoman Covey. Any further discussion then on that motion as it was just amended?
Well, you know, one thing I just thought of is we've offered Officer Clark employment. We don't even know for sure. What if something, God forbid, and I don't see it happening, what if something happens that he doesn't, you know, he can't go through with this or doesn't go through with this? I mean, and we're back down to interviewing and getting the next person. I mean, this is why I'm saying we should just take it a little step at a time.
We have a motion to authorize Jeffrey Harbin, Chief of Police of Carnegie Borough, to take application, prepare necessary documentation, prepare for Camp Cadet. It has been made and seconded. Why don't we do Chief of Roll Call Vote on this, just so it's very clear, please? Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Verres?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sorsfield?
Yes.
President of the House?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have no further motions this evening, Mr. President. Thank you.
Councilwoman Verres, please continue developing motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2012-01, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie urging the Court of Common Police to stop the ongoing court order reassessment process and to call upon the Governor and General Assembly to impose a statewide moratorium on single-digit court order county reassessments. And calling upon the Governor and General Assembly to enact comprehensive legislation that provides for uniformed statewide system for establishing property values in the Commonwealth so that all residents, businesses, governments, and school districts are afforded stability, certainty, and fairness.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. For those in the audience who'll note that there was a change to the wording, there was a typo on the top of the page there, third line, establishing property values in the Commonwealth, striking out the words, and I'll talk and continue. Discussion, please.
I mean, my, Mr. President, my only thoughts on this are obviously, Allegheny County's been singled out in this whole property assessment mess. I'm sure all of you have been following this over the, over the past year, the debacles that have been going on, the court battles, what have you. Basically, what this, what this resolution does is hopefully sends a message to the Governor that we want uniformed property assessment across the state, not just in Allegheny County alone. And therefore, that's why we are drafting this resolution to send to the Governor, send obviously to the county executive first and then to the Governor because of the problem with the property tax increases potentially.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments?
One other thing I want to mention there, we also need to have a fair, uniform way of doing assessments. And you read a lot of articles in the paper, two people live side by side, have the identical homes, one's assessed at $100,000, the other was assessed at $150,000. You can't do that. So they have to come up with a system that's fair to everybody. And unfortunately, for years and years and years, we haven't been able to do that. But I do believe in the next year or two, they're going to be able to do it.
Thank you.
I think so, one other question.
Right. My question was, are we doing this uniformly with other communities? Or how is that more fair?
It was sent, this was, this was sent out to all the communities. Our meeting's tonight, so we're obviously passing it over.
All of this out to us and all out to the Governor.
Well, we would hope that they would do the same and pass this as well, but each community's own, these are independent, obviously.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion B to adopt Resolution Number 2012-02, a resolution of the Borough of Carnegie adopting the Hattlerburg Carnegie and Scott Township multi-municipal plan dated October 2011 as prepared by Pastic Associates for forward planning and Tranche Associates and as recommended by the Planning Commission Public Hearing to be held on February 13, 2012, at 6:30 PM.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Comments, please? This is the hearing we held just before the meeting this evening, Public Hearing on the comprehensive plan that was prepared by the three townships municipalities. There's no further comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion C, motion to execute a pre-development agreement with Wright Chiplot Holdings, LP, regarding the development of certain property within the boundaries of the borough comprised of, or comprised of a parcel block and lot 66-E-20, 66-E-24, 66-E-44, 66-E-46, 66-E-E-48, and 66-E-50.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is regarding some expansion by Wright Suzuki. You're familiar with Wright Suzuki, formerly Wright Pontiac. There's two homes, you may have noticed recently, there are two homes that were torn down right next to Wright. Wright has purchased that property and tore those homes down so that they could make the apartment a lot larger. And that is part of, this motion is part of that process whereby the county would combine these various lots. And Wright has entered into agreement with us to pay for the expenses associated with that entire process. Any other comments, please, from the council?
I just want to make a comment about that intersection down there. You've got CVS, you've got Wright's expanding, they did their used car lot a few years ago. And if you do drive through there now, it's quite, it's all built up, it's lit, it looks really good. And I'm pretty proud of that area. I think it looks really nice.
Very nice. There's no further comments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Motion to execute, oh, I'm sorry, we did it wrong. Motion to reappoint John Chaski to the Planning Commission with a term expiring on January 1, 2016.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any comments? Roll call vote, please, Chief. Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sorsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Verres?
Yes.
President of the House?
Yes.
Motion to reappoint Phil Sabato to the Planning Commission with a term expiring on January 1, 2016.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Comments, anyone? Being done, a roll call vote, please, Chief. Councilwoman Catina?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sorsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Verres?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
President of the House?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion to reappoint Melvin Cook to the Planning Commission with a term expiring on January 1, 2016.
Second.
Comments? Roll call vote, please, Chief. Councilwoman Sorsfield?
Yes.
Councilwoman Covey?
Yes.
Councilwoman Verres?
Yes.
Councilwoman Demko?
Yes.
Councilwoman Catina?
Yes.
President of the House?
Yes.
Motion passes. At this time, we'll go into committee reports and start with Councilman Catina, Administration Finance. Last month, I asked Councilman Catina, who is responsible for our budget process, he is the Chair of the Finance Committee, and I've asked him to give a summary of last year's budget and a preview of this year's financial situation in the borough.
Hello, everybody. I'm going to try not to bore everybody, because numbers are kind of dry. But just to give everyone a general idea, on a budget of $4.3 million, we exceeded, the good news is we exceeded revenues last year by about $200,000. But unfortunately, we are still about $113,000 over budget from what we anticipated. The high-level overview for, just to go down some of these columns where you keep informed, property taxes, $2.1 million were collected and we actually budgeted about two flats. So we actually collected a little more in property taxes. Act 511 taxes, which are your per capita taxes, your EIT taxes, your real estate transfer tax, mechanical devices, the OSA occupational tax, we came in at 105.9 versus a budget of 108.7. So we are relatively flat there, we're within 3% of budget. Non-business licenses and permits, these are your demolition permits, your street openings, your curb cuts. We brought in $50,000 on a budget of $40,000 last year. Our fines, these are your court costs, your vehicle code violations, ordinance violations. We were about $55,000 on a budget of 74. So we are about $19,000 short on that. Rents and royalties, we actually brought in about $156,000 on a $140,000 budget. Our state shared revenue, which is our per dog, our road turnback, our alcohol and beverage license, our fees from the state, basically, we got $225,000 on a budget of $163. General services, we actually brought in $28,000 on a budget of 69, but there was a fire escrow and other fees that brought that down by $32,000. So that shouldn't have been included. So if you look at that, the budget was actually very close to where it should have been for the year for charge for general services. Next, we're going to go, that was the revenue line items, basically the money we're bringing in for the year. As far as expenses go, our general government expenses, these are the salaries of council members, mayor, manager, what have you. We brought it in, or we budgeted about $190,000 for that and we actually brought in $122,000. We were about $40,000 over, not over last year, but $40,000 under because we budgeted $40,000 for the current manager, our part-time current manager position, which we never filled. Tax collection, we came in at $67,000 on a budget of $69,000. Solicitor and labor expense, we were actually, we budgeted $55,000 last year for this, but we actually came in at $106,000. So that's much higher than we needed. We obviously need to work on that. Engineering services, I say that, because our solicitor's sitting next to me. Engineering services, $103,000. These are the fees that we paid at Gateway, our engineering firm for various projects. We were $103,000 for the year on a budget of 84, so we were about $19,000 on that is over, over on that as well, which we need to control this year on that as well. Municipal building, we were $193,000 on a budget of $100. The main, two main problems with that is we had unanticipated expense last year for the roof of the building, which was about $40,000. So we had to get that fixed. And then we obviously had to pay taxes, back taxes on this building as well, and that was to the tune of $55,000. Going into public safety, public safety, the interesting thing is, on their budget last year, their budget was $1,110,010. And they actually came in at $1,117,553. So they were only about $7,000 short of budget. The big expense there is their overtime expense last year. They had about a $75,000 overtime expense on a budget of $50,000. So we were way over on overtime expense last year for that. Fire protection, fire protection, and fire protection's always a hot topic, it's been a hot topic over the past few months. So just to explain what that is, basically what that breaks out is, that's gasoline, we pay for a vehicle lease on one pumper truck at the fire department house, that's $34,000. We paid an additional $18,000 to put our ladder truck repair last year to get it up to NFPA standards because it was obviously out of, out of the standards. So we had to bring that up together. Advertising, printing for the fire department, fire hydrants, we actually pay a fee to Pennsylvania American Water, a fee so we can use their fire hydrants in case there is a fire, which is kind of funny to me that we have to pay the water department to use their fire hydrants if there is a fire. That's to the tune of $33,000. And then the annual contribution, which we gave them $142,000 last year. So we were $229,000 last year, basically, for the fire department, for all the fees rolled up into the fire department on a budget of $206,000. And like I said, the $20,000 roughly, we went over on that for the ladder truck repair. Planning and codes, we are $43,000 on a budget of $46,000. Public Works, Public Works did a good job last year, they were $646,000 on a budget of $717,000. One of the concerns that sticks out this year, obviously stuck out last year and this year that we need to be mindful of, is the salary of the part-time staff. We spent about $21,000 on that, we only budgeted about $7,000. But that's because we obviously bought, brought in people to work over the summer for part-time help earlier in the year and they stayed on later in the year and assess Public Works. So Public Works, their focus on much bigger, better projects would obviously save us additional money in the long run. The additional money is to some of the sewer repair work and some of the road work they've done. And obviously, that saves us a lot more money than suddenly having Public Works to have to dress. Public Works of the line items for road maintenance supplies, repair contracts, miscellaneous road supplies, vehicles, parts, we were a little bit over there. We were at $50,000 only on a budget of $14,000. We were a little bit over there. We were at fifty thousand dollars, only on a budget of fourteen. And that was miscellaneous road supplies and vehicle parts were the main concerns there, the main increases. So that's where we need to watch this year as well. Parking. For our parking line items for last year, we were fifty-nine thousand on a budget of thirty-four. We had an increase in the Honest Wagner lot for the lot lease payment. A lot of people might not realize that we don't own the Honest Wagner lot, even though we rent out the spaces. We're in a lease agreement with that to basically pay them for usage of their lot. So that was an increase for last year. And I realize, I'm almost near the end because I'm starting to lose people, I'm sure. Property insurance. Last year, we were seventy-one thousand on a budget of thirty-seven thousand. Our property casualty insurance was fifty-nine thousand on a budget of thirty-seven thousand. So that was the main difference sales we need to watch on. And health insurance. Health insurance was up about a hundred thousand dollars over what we budgeted last year. So that's obviously a concern for this year. Even with the healthcare contributions we're getting this year, it's still going to be something that we need to watch. It's a contractual obligation, but it's still something we need to watch very carefully to make sure that we're on budget for this year. And like I said, for this year, these are some of the things we're going to be monitoring. And so far for this or last month, we're pretty close to budget where we should be for one month of the year. But one month of the year doesn't make or break the budget, obviously. We'll have a much better idea at the end of the first quarter and then the end of the second quarter and so on and so forth. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
I have a question, Councilman. You mentioned that we ran a little bit negative last year, about, what, a hundred and fifty thousand?
A hundred and thirteen thousand.
A hundred and thirteen thousand dollars negative. Since we're obligated by law to pass a balanced budget each year, it's not like the federal government where you can choose to run a deficit every year. We're not allowed to do that. We have to pass a balanced budget each year. So when we run a negative for the year, where does that money actually come from?
It wasn't a negative. That was money carried over in the surplus from the prior year from the general fund.
So we had less of a surplus at the end of the year than we would normally have?
Yes.
Okay.
It's not a negative on the ballot. It's not a surplus, the fund in the surplus account wasn't as much as equipped for prior years because of the unexpected, or the unexpected expenditures that hit us last year, especially the tax. Taxes really hit us hard.
So the cookie door wasn't running yet. The issue on tax, in case you didn't follow that, this building, you'd say, why would the borough pay tax to itself? It's not about us paying tax to ourselves, just like your home. Most of your real estate tax in your home goes to the school district. And that's the same thing for this building. The school district still wants their tax money for this building that we occupy. And so that's a huge chunk of money, and that's what the council was referring to.
And Mr. President.
Yes.
When we talk about that, it's only the portion of the building that's rented out to private industry.
Right, that's correct. Part that you're in right now is not taxable, but just down the hallway, there's some space that we rent out to companies, and that is taxable property.
And Mr. President, if I remember correctly, according to the Allegheny County website for property assessment, this overall property for this building is assessed at three point one million dollars, which to me seems a little high, obviously, for if you try to sell something in Carnegie. So one of the things that we actually discussed tonight was actually the borough of Carnegie possibly appealing their tax property assessment appeal, or filing an appeal on our taxes because we think we're assessed too high.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments for your finance committee?
The only other thing I'd like to remind everyone of, Mr. President, is obviously last month, I've talked about delinquent taxes. Come March first, we will, provided this council's behind it, we will be publishing the delinquent tax list. So I've always said that we'd never raised, I mean, my personal opinion is we'd never raise taxes until we collected all the revenue on the table. And there's delinquent tax revenue on the table. So I suggest if you owe taxes, you pay it out or your name's going to be published come March first. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Coby, code enforcement.
Yes, I just have a few things. The mechanical device licenses, which is your amusement articles, bumper machines, pull labels, et cetera. They went out last Friday. Now, the dumpster permits are going to go out this Friday, so we should be getting them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Demko, please, the Public Works Committee.
We had two emergency repairs. We had two emergency repairs. On East Street, there was a blockage, which they cleared the blockage, but the manhole still needs, we've got to redone or replace it. We need to replace the manhole still needs replaced because the man is about to run the manhole, which caused the blockage. So it's done, it's open, the manhole needs to be replaced. There was another emergency repair on Roseland Road. There was a sink hole because of the sewer line. And it's, the sewer line is not now, but it's there.
Right.
And they're still working on that also. It's actually done, please, can you do it, correct me? And do you want to talk about the network?
We can talk about Connect now.
Connect, what we personally discussed last month. For anybody that doesn't know what Connect is, Mr. President, it is a congress of neighboring communities, is what it is. And there's thirty-plus communities in Connect. What they do is they get together and discuss different things that happen with everybody in the communities. And right now, their major thing right now is they're working on the authority budget cuts and all the, you know, all the authority cuts. And they're upset because they said it's really going to impact our community in a bad way. So what they're doing is they're drafting a letter and a letter of resolution that they would like, it should be finished by next month. So they'd like everybody to put it on their agendas and adopt it and send it on to our, you know, congresspeople and, you know, everybody involved because they're really trying to get them to, you know, stop budget cuts. Because it's really going to impact the Congress. So next month, we're probably going to have a letter.
Thank you, Councilman. Public Safety, Councilman Sarsfield.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to once again thank this council for unanimously permitting the harm of the thirteenth police officer. And as the mayor emphasized, this will allow some bike patrols and court patrols and perhaps alleviate some time to assist on investigations, except for maybe that one week. Also, through the council of governments, which you went to last month with me, Mr. President, they did training up at Torture Valley High School. And through the efforts of Sergeant Kennedy, he has been representing us at the College Chiefs of Police meetings. They're preparing to conduct a field exercise to be held at Carnegie Elementary School with other neighboring police agencies. I think this will be very beneficial to the teachers there, to how to respond to incidents. And talking to the chief of the corner, you know, they just use the paint guns. But even them going off inside a closed building, the teacher said was quite shocked. You know, they just weren't prepared for it. But I think that, you know, will provide for some more safety and security for our children at Carnegie Elementary School. Another program that Sergeant Kennedy is also going to work on, that he was prepared to work on through the college program, but because of the type of federal budget, Congressman Murphy was very much in support of him as to find, but the money was just not there. He's going to work in conjunction with the Pennsylvan State Police to do tractor-trailer inspections. And that revenue will directly stream into Carnegie. And that's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Community Development, Councilman Sarsfield or Verres, please.
The first thing that I want to go over is on the fire department. President at the loss, Councilman Sarsfield and myself have been meeting to create a new ordinance, a current ordinance for the fire department to be, or to work with Carnegie. And then after we get an ordinance completed, we need to get a contract, an annual contract done so that we can have this signed and, if necessary, changed every year because things do change and the amounts that we give them every year will change and things like that. So we are working on the ordinance and the contract for the fire department. With the school district, what I read in the paper just recently was that they're looking at spending six million dollars on renovating Carnegie Elementary and six million dollars to renovate Crafton Elementary. And they assigned the duties to put these two tasks together by John Ricchio, who's the maintenance person at the school, and by Ray Wacoia, a school board member. So they are working together to figure out what they're going to spend the twelve million dollars on. A lot of people like that idea, a lot of people don't, and that was a big to-do that we had with the school district last year. They've also discontinued the contract with Kimball and Associates, who were their architects at the school district, to put a plan together. And their ultimate goal at the end was to, or the recommendation was to build a new elementary school, one elementary school in Carnegie, to replace what's there now in Crafton Elementary. But that's not going to happen now. As far as community development goes, we have numerous new companies as well as established companies trying to, or going to the CCDC, which is the Carnegie Community Development Corporation, to apply for their facade program so that they can renovate their building. And that is a program that can be used all the way through the whole Carnegie area, before it was limited to East and West Main Street. So we have CVS Pharmacy now, which is open. We have the car dealer expanding down there. We have the new, what is the center that's down there? Atowee Center down there, which is a religious group. And when you look at some of the smaller businesses like restaurants, lodges, and things like that, we have two or three of those in the works right now. So the revitalization of Carnegie for the business district is starting to happen. And I think this year will be a very good year for that. And I think this council has done a lot to support, whether you're a resident or a business, we've done everything we can to try to make this community thrive here. And I think this year is going to do that. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Verres. We always put a space on our agenda for the fire chief to make a report. As you know, he's usually absent, and he's absent again this evening. Unfortunately, considering how important the fire department issues are right now, that's disappointing. Junior Council report.
We probably have to discuss that later and see if they're going to come back or if maybe we need to.
Put that in the veins until further report. At this time, I'll ask the mayor for his comments.
Thank you, Mr. President. Last month, we had criminal arrests and citations of twenty-six, traffic citations fifty-one, parking tickets a hundred and fourteen. Complaints of self-initiated activity was one thousand and fourteen. We've had a, in the last couple of weeks, we've had a few incidents that have made the news. Criminal activity and incidents that have made the news in our borough. One of the incidents was a high-speed chase. What had happened was, is that one of our officers, or a couple of our officers, had gotten information that an individual who was wanted by the sheriff's fugitive program was in our community. They actually were able to secure an address and they staked out the house, waiting for the individual to show himself. And when the individual did, the individual jumped into his, into his friend's car and led our police on a high-speed chase. Now, the thing I'm very proud of and I want to commend our officers are, they, the chase did not get out of hand. They realized that, you know, the safety of the people around them is paramount. And they proceeded with this chase in a respectful but meaningful way. The chase ended up in Beachview, off of Tropical Avenue, where the individual wrecked his car, jumped out into the woods back there. And I am familiar with that area. There is quite a bit of woods. And ran into the woods, and that's where we lost them. That would have been nice to have the dog right there. That would have been, you know, where's the dog when you need him sometimes? I guarantee he wouldn't have got away with DAX. But that's where we lost them. But there were multiple departments on this chase. But once again, commending our officers for doing it responsibly. The other piece of information that made the news is extremely sad. There was a homicide in our community last week. It was a young lady. And this was the first homicide we've had here since two thousand and six. First of all, I want to give our condolences to her family. It was a sad situation. But I will have to commend our officers on this one, too. We received a nice compliment from Allegheny County Homicide. We secured the area immediately. We made an immediate arrest. And they protected the evidence. And they said that we did it with the utmost professionalism with our privacy management. So we appreciate that compliment in this tragic situation. We, in the last few years, we had a number of, I'm going to give you the crime stats for the last few years of our community. But last year, we had a reduction of major crimes, which is robbery, burglary, burglary, aggravated assault, arson, grand larceny, and those type of events. So this is all on the uniform crime report. And there was a twenty-five percent reduction of crime. We also had a thirteen percent reduction of crime in other areas. So for a total reduction last year in crime in our community was fourteen point seven one percent. It was fifteen percent reduction in crime. And that coupled with the year before, which was an eleven percent down. Shows that crime for the last couple of years has been down for about twenty-five percent in our community, which is good news. Even though one crime, though, is a bad thing, but it is good that it's going down. The concern I have is if the economy continues in this downward trend, I don't know if we can continue in our downward trend because more people will return to crime, unfortunately. We also had some incidents at Carnegie Tower. The incidents there were significantly up, significantly up last year. There was a large increase in disorderly conduct. We are monitoring that very closely in the upcoming months because we don't want to see that get out of hand. But once again, disorderly conduct is mostly an internal thing, not external. So there's a little difference in the type of crime there. We're not talking about major crimes. Let's say aggravated assault and burglary. We're just talking about disorderly conduct that disputes mostly between neighbors and such. Bottom Dollar opened up, and we all, and it's a very interesting store. I know it's in Scott Township. But anytime you shop at Bottom Dollar, it looks like it's a Carnegie Borough reunion at times. There are many, many individuals from Carnegie at Bottom Dollar. But there is one concern, it's the carts. The carts are supposed to stay on the Bottom Dollar lot. We received a few complaints about carts leaving the lot. So we are stepping up patrols in that area, and our police will address that if we see people pushing carts down the street that belong to Bottom Dollar. Also, in this month, in Carlington Launtor Magazine, our police department received some very positive publicity for a few quality programs we bring back to our schools. And we bring back schools. We did the current drug trends for teenage, for teenage boys and girls. We did that presentation that was well-received. DAX did a drug, DAX did, I'm sorry, a drug location demonstration for a couple of classrooms. And the chief did a presentation on the horrible flood that we experienced. And I heard from many people that it was a very good presentation. It worked well with the lesson about the power of water in Mr. Bassett's class. Here's some things for two thousand and twelve, planning a strategy we had with the sergeants and the chief. We were talking about, here are some, we will continue the success of last year's Irish Town Sweep. We hope to bring more sweeps into the community, not hope to, we will bring more sweeps into the community. We will sweep Irish Town again, and we will sweep a couple of the other communities. neighboring communities also. So we will continue that, that was very successful. We are planning an increase of foot patrols in problem areas and reinstituting our bike patrol, especially in the areas that give us the most criminal issues. We are planning truck inspections. As Councilman Sars will mention before, we talked about this in our meeting. And Sergeant Kennedy has a connection with the state police and we are going to be, with the Marcella Shell industry ramping up, they use this as a shortcut. And we've been talking for quite a while now how to address that. One of the things was, we thought about having an officer trained, but we found that that was too cumbersome because an officer trained in truck inspection has to do so many inspections to keep a certification. But this, this way we can use the state police. It actually would be a shared revenue thing and not, not all the revenue would come to the borough, but we would get some revenue from this, not as much as if we were to be doing our own inspection. But it would just be impossible with a small staff like this to keep someone certified in inspection. Yes, sir?
There was an incident on the Mansfield that goes off of Roward Avenue, up the hill one way. There was a truck probably from that truck track. It's on like the corner of Phillips Town and Green and that Mansfield.
Right.
And I've seen it in the paper, they say that he must have had a car GPS telling him to go on that road. And I was just, I was hearing weird noises and I saw red blue lights, so I went out. They were, the cop was trying to get it to back down.
Was our officer on top of it though?
Yeah, there was an officer there, but that's purely a case that they don't have the right of GPS. They're using a cheap button to direct them to roads that they shouldn't be on.
And that's a concern of ours, that's why we discussed this in our meeting about, you know, addressing the trucks, the truck traffic through our community.
Is it possible for the borough to have an ordinance that requires the trucks to have a truck or GPS?
I don't know if we could uphold that ordinance, I don't think we have to, we don't, I don't think we could do that, but I can check into that for you. It's a good idea, I'll check into it. Thank you. Also, for 2012 goals, we are definitely looking to provide more training opportunities for our police officers. In the last few years, we haven't had as many training opportunities that we'd like due to the 12th officer. So now we will be getting an additional officer that should provide additional training opportunities. We have a very young staff, I think, still. We have, there's some senior officers, but we still have some young officers that are very good and need some additional training. We will continue to be vigilant with our DCRs and hold problem landlords accountable for attendance. We will continue to monitor the issues at Carnegie Towers very closely. We have identified some special preventative measures that we will be implementing, these strategies throughout, we are implementing these strategies throughout the year. When it comes to children's programming, our department is absolutely second to none. And not only that, I believe that I, you know, I complement that by doing it in a tremendous amount of children programming, myself with Career Lunches and some other things I do with the schools. So when it comes, this year we are going to concentrate on more programming for seniors and other residents, including fraud prevention, crime prevention, personal safety, and possible cyber safety. There's been, since when I'm out on the street, I hear a lot of seniors asking where our police department is when it comes to doing these things. I'd like to thank Ashley Hines of the Northwest Savings Bank for her participation and sponsorship of the Career Lunches that we bring to the Carnegie Elementary School. Once a month, we have a lunch where we provide an individual from a community and they talk about their career, and those things have been very successful. It's been a great partnership. Unfortunately, we talked about the grant that we applied for along with the school district, the library, the Boys and Girls Club the Century 21 grant. We were denied for that grant, but we learned some valuable lessons on that. We've got a late start on it and hopefully next year that partnership will expand. And that grant should provide plenty of summer programming for the children that would complement the Boys and Girls Club and the library. The Boys and Girls Club's fourth annual comedy fundraiser is March 16th. That's a very important fundraiser, it's at 7:00 PM at the Doubletree Hotel in Green Tree. They use that for scholarships for the summer. Tickets are $25. Being a board member, you can see me for tickets. I have it right in my packet, maybe he wants to drop me before I leave. And if not, you can also go to the Boys and Girls Club to get the, to get tickets yourself. Last month, I talked about the Mills on Wheels slicer. We are still looking for a slicer. The cost of a new slicer is around $5,000. It's a tremendous expense because they need, they need a state-of-the-art slicer to handle the, for their kitchen to handle the, the food that they handle. We would like to donate this slicer in honor of Paulie Gass. I've had a lot of people come up already and offer donations, so we're still doing that. They also need drivers, don't forget. And two last things is, we do provide free tax preparation here at the borough and at the Sharters Valley Senior Center, or Sharters Senior Center. That's underway right now, it goes to April 12th. So from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM by appointment, you can either call the borough building or the senior center. And for modern and low-income families and seniors, you can get free tax preparation. And lastly, the Boy Scouts left, but they invited me to their meeting last night and they had a citizenship badge that they were working on. And I had 12 Boy Scouts that were questioning me about everything that's going on in the borough. So it was a great evening, very enjoyable and that. They needed to attend part of our borough meeting to get their badge. Trust me, they've earned their badge attending the borough meeting. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, if anybody out here would like to make comments about anything that's been discussed this evening, you're welcome to do so. Step up to the microphone, please, and state your name and where you live and then call in.
My name is Stephen Parker, I live on Roward Avenue. And I can recall when there was a member of the council who I knew since first grade, that I considered the council meetings quite amusing. But I really appreciate what you guys have accomplished in the last few years. I mean, the idea, the thing about the taxes and, like I asked, Code's office and the council about the swat, the pylons that are on Mansfield. And I just really appreciate what the chief has done and what all of you have done in the last few years, that you're really working at things and it's not a lot of conflict between different groups.
Thank you.
I just need to know, James Burgess, an affiliate with the Department of the Church. One of your motions, the motion under the administration of finance, motion number G. I just need a little more clarification on taxes. Are you allowing this taxes for me, or what is this all about?
What it is, is borough owns some property.
Borough owns the property?
This building included.
All right.
There's another piece of property, 713 Bear Way, that Mr. Byron's trying to buy. And essentially, what this particular motion deals with is the borough basically taxing itself. So basically, what the borough said with the motion was, it's kind of ridiculous for us to pay the taxes back to ourselves. So the borough taxes, it got rid of. But it's only on property that the borough owns. Now, they're still on those same properties, including this building. There's still school taxes that the borough has to pay on the garage part of this building. We can't exonerate, the council can't exonerate those. But as far as the taxes, the borough taxes, it really kind of, it's an academic endeavor for the borough to pay the taxes to itself. So they just exonerate it.
Is there a way that the borough owns property to tax it, if not the legal taxes from other people?
No, it only has to do with the taxes that the borough owes itself.
Good evening, my name is Don McElman, and I'm a property owner in Carnegie. I'm a former resident in Carnegie. And I'm here to ask some questions on some code enforcement violations I've received before the Christmas holiday. I'd spoken to Mr. Roma about these. And he had asked me, on December 12th, we had a conversation. And I had, per his instruction, I had sent in a schedule to look at repairs for the property, to get out the code. I received a letter from him after, I believe, the January council meeting, where he had said that, that my proposal was rejected, but not any specific sample part of it was rejected. And I have a copy of the letter I had sent to him. Of course, I didn't write a copy of the letter, it's sent back to me. Part of his letter said that he was sorry, but he would not be able to help me any further with this matter. I didn't call him, he did not return a phone call. I had called Councilman Kovey, Councilman Kovey, she had not returned my phone call either. So that's why I'm here tonight to try to get some understanding of.
This property is where, sir?
I'm on Elk Avenue.
Excuse me, you called my home phone?
I called the borough number and I left a message.
Okay.
It was sometime, I think, after I received Mr. Roma's letter.
And I was not at the January meeting, I unfortunately was in the hospital, so that's why.
And I did call today, but I didn't expect you to get a, if I could talk to you today, I wouldn't have to come to the meeting this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'll give you my card before you leave with my home phone on.
And basically, what I'm asking is, Mr. Roma had said that my property is, because it is unoccupied, is placed on the condemned list. And I'm not really sure what that means and I'm not sure of the timeline to have the repairs done.
Is this a property that has two homes on it, one toward the street and one in the back on the hillside?
Yes, on Elk Avenue, yeah.
And Terry, the one in the front, explain the difference in the condition between these two buildings?
Well, there's a front structure and a rear structure. He was issued notice to register his vacant structure. And he did register the rear structure. His letter is asking for exemption from the front, for the front structure.
No, I'm sorry, it was a reverse, I paid for the front. Yeah, it's fine because of.
But, yes, he did register the front structure. He's asking for an exemption for the rear structure. I brought it up at the last workshop, I mean, January's workshop. And he did not meet the criteria that the ordinance offers for exemptions. And so I sent him a letter for it.
And that's not what I'm disputing tonight.
Well, that's what he's asking me.
Yeah, yeah, but what I'm asking is, what does it mean to be on the condemned list? I mean, I don't want to start putting $1,000 into my property and.
I think you get a couple of exceptions.
Okay.
Terry, if I'm wrong, eight pieces, you contacted him because he did file for vacant property?
Yes, plus 425 Elk Front has been vacant since the month.
Okay, is this on our demo list?
Yes, it is.
So that's the house that's on the demo list?
So I got the rear house. First designated it as unfit for occupancy and subsequently condemned it and added to the demolition list for council's consideration.
And that's the one that he has the vacant property registration on?
Yes, he has it.
Okay. In short, what, can the program be re-?
Please. And that would be his decision?
Right, if I may, it's been a matter of findings, it is more than ever yet.
I'm not exactly familiar with property, but, so my first question, whether it can, because there are some properties that, there are some properties that are beyond redemption. What it means to be placed on the demo list is, well, first off, the vacant property registry is pretty self-explanatory. If it's vacant property, it has to be registered by the borough ordinance. One of the properties you have, the other one you haven't. When you get on the demolition list, that's the list that Mr. Roma comprises and after my review comes the council. And decisions are made, basically what funding is available, for which properties are the most, of the highest nuisance. And we proceed to get court, go through court, legal process to obtain a court order to demolish properties. Right now, yours may be on the list, but it is not essentially targeted because we filed a demolition complaint, yours wasn't on it. Once we finish obtaining the legal clearances for the properties that we have on it, we'll file another one and at that time, Mr. Roma will decide whether that would be on that next complaint. In the meantime, however, one way to get off that complaint is, to get off that list is to rehabil property. In fact, that's probably pretty much the only way to do it. And the first thing that we would, we would see would be, would there be any permits necessary for him to get that?
Depends on nature of the.
Of course, the first step of doing that is to obtain the necessary permits to rehabil property. And then, once you do that, you stay in contact with Mr. Roma to make extensions, to make progress towards rehabilitating property. Within a certain period of time, if you do it, if you get your target, then you'll be off the list.
And that's fine, but I guess one here again is, I had received that letter and I had tried to contact Mr. Roma and Councilman Kovey to get further clarification and I have not received any phone calls back. And again, per his letter, he had said that, "I'm sorry, I can't help you any further in this matter." And I'm not really sure what that meant or what status I was in. I had presented a schedule to try to have that front property renovated by the end of the summer because right now it is winter, I don't have heat in that property, so it's kind of difficult to go into work right now. So I had, and I can share this schedule with you if you haven't already shared it with the council. And if you want to see it, see it.
I have, after the meeting, I have been following the facts.
And so I just want to know what part of my plan was rejected? Was it the whole plan? Was it, does it take you too long? Was there not enough information in there? I just left without any other information. And again, I don't want to go down and start renovating if I found out in a month, next month you meet and decide to put my property on top of the list and it's torn down a month later. I'm not sure of the process and I'll make sure that I'm not going to be wasting money if I did this.
If I may, your plans to rehab was not rejected. Your request for an exemption, you still have to register the property as a solicitor's motion.
Right.
That's the portion.
Well, I'm sorry, your letter wasn't very clear, that's why I wasn't, I wanted to get clarification on what part of it was rejected, I wasn't really sure of what.
Your letter asked for an exemption.
Right. But there were multiple parts, it was the exemption plus the claim.
I understand you've not exempted.
Yes.
And I'd like to be able to tell you, I'm actively looking to get your house on legal, legally processed to tear it down that fast, but I'm not that, I'm probably looking at the latter part this year.
Okay.
So you have the time to decide to get permits and get started on rehabilitating property.
And do I see Mr. Roma then, does he do about the permits as well? Okay. Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. McElman, one of the things that happens very often with these properties that are not occupied is that a person will come and ask to have their house taken off the demolition list because they're going to repair them.
Right.
And then we do that, we take their house off the list and then they don't repair them. So my only caution would be, don't fall into that situation because what happens is a person can start into repairs and spend money on it and then their house gets torn down anyway and they lose the money they put into their house.
Yeah, I'm not asking you to take it off the list, just clarification on when, how much time I have to do the repairs.
Very good.
Okay? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McElman?
I've got a second chance. Yeah, one other question. Well, about the demo list, do the public have access to that demo list? Do we have access to, we can, I can see the addresses of the property on the demo list.
I don't have that. I don't have that.
Yeah, I'm saying yes.
The property.
In fact, to the extent, I think what it should be done because there's people that might be able to purchase other properties on the demo list.
Well, my question, my daughter trained in property and I don't have demo list. What do we need to do to get it on the demo list? So we have property by a church that hadn't been occupied since.
I know which one you're talking about.
Yeah, and they got the doors open and the kids can get in there and get hurt.
It is on the.
This is my secured property.
Yeah, I just want to say.
Yeah, it is on the list.
It is on the list?
But where I'm also talking to.
But we're also talking to.
Pastor Davis.
Pastor Davis about you guys taking over as well. So in fact, the mayor asked me, I think I will bring it, call me back, the mayor asked me, we'll get a call tomorrow. All right. Everybody, this is this can be used.
And we, let's, Claire, I know that you tried to contact her, so she can call you also.
Yeah. Definitely, that is one of the priorities.
Also be advised, if you ever see any unoccupied homes or buildings which aren't secure, that is boarded up so the kids can't get in there, call the police and they will make sure that that gets taken care of because we should not have homes that are open for people to go in and start, you know, mysterious fires or, you know, get involved in drug activities and things like that. So we should not have any open buildings in the borough.
And sir, the building you're talking about too, we had that inspected by the police twice last year. I think there is one section that they, that they can get into the one room.
The back door.
Right, that's exactly the part. But they can't get into the house area from there. But that back door is still not secure. So we'll send somebody down here tomorrow to see if we can secure that.
Appreciate it, thanks.
See if you can send someone, do you know where that's at, next to Second Baptist Church?
Public works, we take care of that in one person.
Thank you, Ben.
322 Mansfield Boulevard.
Any other public comments?
Yeah, got a couple. While we're on the subject of Terrence and Thomas's Downers Center Avenue.
Yes.
Yes.
Pretty large, big, it's gonna happen, all that good stuff.
Well, all the demolitions have to go through a process which the solicitor just mentioned. We have to.
307, 307, that's right there.
So the legal stuff happened?
That's all, the engineers have worked fast.
Nice, perfect, thank you. Second thing that came up from this evening's discussion was, can you guys buy insurance policies to cover your liabilities for life insurance stuff that's in the contracts of the employees?
Yeah, we're going to investigate the cost effectiveness of insuring ourselves on that or buying a policy to cover. So that's on the to-do list, yes.
It seemed obvious to me, but I just made it up.
The thing is, there aren't a whole lot of retirees.
I'm sure there's not.
And somewhere, I guess, the decision was made that it's a self-insure, and the general fund was cheaper to pay. I wasn't involved in that decision, anybody here would have been. But with this arising, it was suggested that somebody look into the cost of the policy.
There you go. Is it possible to get copies of the council meeting agendas in advance?
On the website, on the borough website, there's a place that you can select to get the agenda for the meeting, yes, and the minutes from previous meetings.
I've seen the minutes from previous meetings.
Well, when you come in, there are a lot of them.
Oh yeah, I got that. But I didn't know I.
One is a day that we posted during the day before the meeting. So usually, usually anytime during one day, they'll be up there.
Is it common for motions to be presented that are not on the agenda?
Not typically, but it is an option for any council member to make a motion which is not on the agenda.
It just seemed like there was a whole lot of stuff that could have gone on ahead of time, I'm gonna say, everybody time, if it had been presented earlier. Thoughts have been a lot clearer as opposed to being ad hoc, if you will.
Sometimes that happens.
Sometimes that happens. Another question I had is last year there was an ordinance passed that basically prevents any additional homes on Library Avenue from becoming rental property or splitting individual units into multiple units, if you will. At that point in time, it was stated that there was going to be some kind of a master plan for the entire borough developed. And I just wondered what the status of that is.
Of the zoning change for the entire borough?
Yeah, as opposed to just a block.
They were, I think, they were talking that that was going to be included in the comprehensive plan when he came and brought this up last year. They had said that that would be included in our comprehensive plan, but comprehensive plan didn't go to that specific within our borough. I think it is something that we do need to address. There, your area is R1, some of those areas are R1 also, but if there are other areas that we can make R1 due to the rental population, we definitely need to do that, so.
But I don't believe we can make a blanket prohibition against, in the borough, against having.
Correct, if, and stop me from wrong, Mr. Solicitor, but I believe that when we addressed this issue early on in the Library Avenue area of Carnegie, was that we would have to do it neighborhood by neighborhood. That you could not just blanket wide and, you know, to support it, you would get, need to get a petition signed from some residents showing their desire to have it zoned that way. So it's not as simple, just blanket the whole town.
Yeah, you can't, you can't just, because when you make zoning changes, you're.
Honestly, I wasn't asking for it to happen for the whole town. Just that it be evaluated for other parts of the borough. And it's a very simple reason, and I've lived here all my life and I know that there was, the day of the one-car family is gone. Everybody's got two. And as your kids grow up, you have three, you have four, some houses have five cars. And the neighborhood's getting more and more populated with cars. When I drive home, sometimes up Justice or up Mara, you'll see people parked, not just on the curb or on the sidewalk, but even partially in their yards because there's no room to park on the streets. And if you start bringing additional families into single-family homes, it's just going to make it even tougher.
Well, I think the parking, if I'm correct, Terry, parking requirement to split a single home into a double of having off-street parking availability.
Two cars per unit.
Two cars per unit. That means if you want to take a single-family home, and this is anywhere in the borough.